Good morning. We're going to call today's Palm Beach County Planning Commission meeting to order here on January the 14th of 2022. Ma'am, may we please have roll call?
Certainly. John Carr?
Here.
Barbara Roth? Penny Pompey?
Present.
Glenn Grubman? Spencer Siegel? Lori Vinicor?
Here.
Edwin Ferguson? Dagmar Braas? Sarah Perdue?
Here.
Cara Cap?
Rick, can you repeat yourself, please?
Cara Cap?
No, I think it was Rick. Rick Stopek.
Oh, Rick Stopek?
Okay. We can hear him, but just barely.
Kylie Harper Larson? Marcia Hayden?
Here.
Angela Vaughn?
Here.
Eric Royal? We have Quorum.
Madam Clerk, we also have Commissioner Braas. She has arrived.
Thank you, Chair.
All right. At this time, I ask that everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I ask that we vote to allow remote participation for those on WebEx due to the extraordinary circumstances related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion passes. Do we have any postponements on the agenda today?
We do not.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for our last meeting?
A motion to approve the minutes.
All right. All in favor?
From October 15.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we had proof of publication as well.
I thought I asked that question. Do we have proof of publication? I apologize. Okay, great. Any oppositions to the approval of our last meeting's minutes? All right. Next, we'll go to item two, comments by the public. I have one card in at this time by for Mr. Drew Martin. Mr. Martin, would you mind stepping to the podium, please?
It's for a non-agenda item.
Non-agenda item, yes.
It says 2A.
It says for a non-agenda item.
Well, it's...I'm sorry, Madam Director.
Yes.
It says the next thing is 2A, right? So he has his card marked for 2A?
Yep.
Okay.
Did I take my mask off?
Understood. So here, comment 2A by the public on non-agenda items. I apologize, Mr. Martin.
Okay, no problem.
At three minutes.
Do I take my mask off to comment?
That is appropriate. That's fine.
I'm going to...I want to talk a little bit about, just generally, about planning and why I think that it's important to stick with plans that have been made in by the county for over the many years, and also the importance of agriculture. And I don't think these are directly on the agenda, so I think I can speak about these. I think one thing, I served for eight years on the Palm Beach County Soil and Water Conservation District, and I came to learn how important agriculture was in Palm Beach County. I didn't really realize it. I think when you live in eastern Palm Beach County, you don't realize that agriculture is so important to our economy here. And I think that we really see ourselves, you know, as being driven by development, and that's what our economy runs on. But I think that agriculture plays an important role. And right now, you know, we see that we're losing agriculture land all over the world to a certain, you know, and particularly in the United States. So I think as a planning commission, I think you need to look at some of these broader issues, and that is, should the economy be based on more than just, you know, building houses and development? I also question, you know, there's a real...people are saying there's a real shortage of housing, but I think some of this may be driven by artificial factors. For instance, it turned out that Willow was buying million...or Willow or whatever that it's called, Zillow, I guess, or something. Anyway, they were buying like millions of houses. I get calls every day. Somebody wants to buy my house. It's probably some prince in Saudi Arabia who wants to invest some money offshore. It gives the illusion that there's this huge demand. But I really wonder if we're not just going through another boom and bust. So the notion that we have to constantly build, 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 I think is risky. And so, again, I don't think this is directly on the agenda, but I think it's important that we sit back from time to time and we just think about, what does Palm Beach County want to be? Do we want to lose all the things that help make this economy what it is? There's, you know, a lot of that has to do with things like agriculture, open space, areas that were wetlands originally. So I think as we move through today, I hope that the planning commission will think about some of those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. All right. So now we'll move to comments from the chair. First off, I want to welcome everybody back. Hope you had a very relaxing and enjoyable holiday season. Look forward to working with this board and also the staff. I'm sure you all will continue performing at an exemplary level for the citizens of Palm Beach County. This, I guess technically, is kind of like my second meeting as Chair. So I did take time to speak with our council over the few of the holiday break in regard to some minor changes that I'd like to see us implement moving forward, mainly due to the size of the board. There have been times where we've had extended agendas, larger agendas, where we, you know, have gone into three, four, even longer hour meetings. And considering this is a volunteer board, no one's being paid, I think that we should be a little more respectful for everyone's time. So as Chair, what I'm asking all the commissioners to do moving forward is whenever we have a presenter, an applicant, or staff making their presentations, that is to the extent that we can, please limit our comments, if you will, to questions. Not so much a recount of historical, how do we get here and things of that nature, because just because of the size of the board, I've noticed sometimes meetings tend to spin out of control. Things that...meetings that should be two hours sometimes frankly become three and a half hours. And I don't think that really helps us to remain sharp throughout the course of the meeting and do the business that we've been asked to do. So again, if you have comments, there's a section in the agenda where we can make comments on items, if you will. And I think that'll help us to streamline. So again, moving forward, when we have like this applicant that's coming up today, if you have questions of the applicant, ask those questions. But in terms of comments, in terms of whatever, let's limit that to the appropriate time in the agenda. All right? So now we'll move to our item three, which is the public hearing. And we have an amendment around 2282, privately proposed future land use amendment for the Atlantic Commercial and Self-Storage Fearing II and Seneca II. How much...I'm sorry. I just got back from Tallahassee, so I apologize. Are we giving the applicant...how much time are we giving the applicant for this presentation?
That's up to the Chair.
Generally, we give 15 minutes, so we'll stick to that. Good morning, sir. Let me just get your timer queued up, and then you can proceed.
Good morning and Happy New Year. For the record, Jeff Brophy with WGI. I promise not to take 15 minutes. Well, before you today, I know that you're trying to probably switch the screens here. There you go. Okay. So before you today is Atlantic Commercial Self-Storage as well as two condition of approval amendments to what was known as Fearing II and Seneca II, its neighboring parcels. The parcels, the one before you today in regards to the land use amendment is outlined in the yellow. I'm just going to use the round acres. It's about 10 acres. And beside it are two existing commercial parcels, each equalling about five acres. They're right at the corner there of Lyons and Atlantic. You'll probably know it as the Joseph's Market Plaza. It's Shop Del Ray and Plaza Del Ray. They go by the names that were...under their approvals of Fearing II and Seneca II. Before you today, it's really three different requests. Number one is a land use amendment to go from the AGR to the Commercial Low AGR, which is the same as the neighboring parcels, the two I just discussed, as well as conditions of approval to Fearing and Seneca, which limits the amount of developable square footage on those two parcels. Essentially, what had happened was when we took those through the land use amendment process several years ago, they were approved for a certain amount of square footage. That square footage was not all utilized, and we would like to limit the square footage on those parcels and utilize it for the Atlantic Commercial Amendment that is before you today. Again, just in regards to some of the surrounding uses, this is the node at Lyons and Atlantic where the commercial is really centralized in the ag reserve and in accordance with the master plan and the comprehensive plan. And again, as you can see, right on the corner there outlined in the red, that's the Fearing parcel, originally approved for almost 43,000 square feet. Beside it was the Seneca approval, about 38,500 square feet. And beside it, the parcel before you today is approximately 10 acres, and it's part of what is now a residential AGR PUD, part of the Sussman PUD in one of the preserved parcels. And what you'll see and I'll show you is, in lieu of this parcel, we are utilizing 10 acres elsewhere to compensate for this acreage that will be changed to the Commercial Low designation. So before you is to limit the Fearing and the Seneca, as you see it here. So Fearing would be limited to the 36,170, and Seneca would be limited to the 31,700. And those...the remaining square footage, which they have today, would be transferred over to the Atlantic Commercial and Self-Storage site. And so what that will do is it will allow for the ability for this parcel to be developed with commercial square footage, which we plan on putting towards the north side of the property. And the self-storage will be located to the south of that. In regards to the preserve areas, as you can see, again, outlined in the red there, beside the MUPD on the corner is the existing...that's the site that we're talking about. Again, it's existing as a preserve parcel. We are requesting for that to become MUPD, just as its neighboring parcels are to the west. And in lieu of that 10 acres, we plan on preserving two additional parcels located just to the south and have those designated as AGR Preserve Parcels. So the Sussman PUD will remain whole in regards to the number of acres that it is required to have for preserve. And this parcel here will be ultimately rezoned to MUPD. Just some historical information on the property. So outlined in the yellow is, this was the old airstrip that was used for crop dusting within the ag reserve. We are not in ownership of the entirety of that parcel, just the northern 10 acres. In total, it's about 20 acres. But, and as you can see that...so in the yellow is what is before you today. But in regards to the airstrip history, again, it was utilized for crop dusting and storage of the chemicals on the site. A lot of that happened on the southern 10 acres, which was the most heavily impacted in regards to contamination. But what we have learned over the years as DEP has continued to work on the property is that that contamination has leached to the north as well as to other neighboring parcels. So DEP over the years has been going through mitigation of that contamination. They spent about $5 million on the southern piece. As of right now, they have stopped work on that. But the owner and the applicant continues to work with DEP to...on the northern piece, on our northern 10 acres, actually to identify that as a brownfield designation. It is contaminated, and we will work to obviously mitigate some of the soil contamination and work with them based on the site plan design on capping certain areas in order to get that brownfield designation and develop it as commercial. In regards to traffic policies, we do meet Traffic Policy 3.5D. We do have FDOT approval for our access location on Atlantic. And I think this is an important piece of this property as well, and I think why it really finishes the corner in regards to the development of commercial at this node. Again, you can see in red, that's the existing Shop Del Ray and Plaza Del Ray. Plaza Del Ray is a little farther along than this aerial shows because those shops are now open. But currently, anything coming from the east, any of that westbound traffic coming along Atlantic that wants to enter this site has to come up to the intersection, make the U-turn, and then enter in that right turn lane to get into these two shopping centers. The idea is that with the addition of the AGR Retail and Self-Storage is that we will utilize the existing left-in and allow for cross-access between all three parcels. Therefore, any of that traffic will no longer have to go to the intersection, clog up an already busy intersection, and make that U-turn. They can now enter the site through that existing left-in. We have had pre-application with FDOT, even with the expansion of Atlantic Avenue. In the future, that left-in is going to remain. Staff assessment, the subject site meets the commercial location requirements for the tier, falls within the commercial cap, and the site is adjacent to the west to commercial uses. The request for commercial future land use is appropriate at this location and is compatible, and they do recommend conditions with approval, which we are in agreement with. We do meet the policies of the comprehensive plan, as listed in the staff report. I won't go through all that, but we do meet those policies. And we do have two concurrent zoning requests, again, for the site to go to the MUPD zoning district as well as modify the Sussman AGR PUD to transfer those preserve areas from this site to those two other sites. This is the proposed site plan. Again, we do have those access points, which are going to allow for the cross-access between the different commercial sites and allow for free flow of traffic to go from Lyons Road to Atlantic Avenue without actually hitting that intersection there. The proposed uses are retail, car wash, and self-storage. We are limited by conditions of approval in the application that's before you today. We are going to just do a one-story product on the self-storage. I know some of them can get quite high. You see a lot of them at three stories. This is limited to a one-story, although that's not really before you today, and neither is the site plan. I think it's important to note, knowing that we do have residential to the east. We have had outreach meetings with Del Ray Lakes Estates as well as the Alliance of Del Ray, and we're going to continue to work with both groups as we go through the zoning process, which is where a lot of the questions come up in regards to buffering setbacks, height, and those types of issues. Again, we're not increasing the commercial cap because of that square footage transfer. We're not asking for any text amendment in the comprehensive plan. We're locating the non-residential, as identified, on the ag reserve master plan, alleviating the U-turn movements at Atlantic and Lyons, and we're allowing for that cross-access between the properties. In addition to that, although this is a preserve area on paper, in regards to actually what can be done there, it's a heavily contaminated site. And we believe that it is more appropriate to develop this as non-residential, where it should be in the ag reserve and preserve more appropriate parcels elsewhere. We...in addition to that, again, as I just mentioned, we will continue to work with the neighbors on anything in regards to site design and any other zoning type issue. Staff recommends approval with conditions, again, mainly limiting the types or the amount of square footage on all three of those sites, requiring that cross-access and requiring the zoning application to be concurrent, which it is currently now. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner Rowe.
Good morning, Mr. Brophy, and Happy New Year.
Good morning.
Nice to see you. Just a question about the timing of the remediation of the brownfield. How does that work in conjunction with the county and inspections and with your project moving ahead?
That's a great question. I'm actually going to ask Jason or Eric, the property owners and developers to... They're arguing over who wants to actually answer this question.
Uh-oh. Thank you.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year. Eric Hocken with Pep Enterprises. In regards to your question, we plan on commencing construction hopefully by the middle of the year, once we start the brownfield process. What we've discussed to help mitigate the environmental contaminants is to cap the site by bringing in two feet or three feet of fill to go over the existing conditions and raise it up to the appropriate level for development.
Thank you. I'm sorry. And the timing in conjunction of the rest of your... Do you have to complete all of that, have that inspected and approved before you begin anything else?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions?
I also have a question. Regarding the self-storage, the reason the self-storage is allowed, the 99,000 additional square feet of quasi-commercial is because of the ULDC change as far as self-storage is not included in the commercial cap, which is what went forward on Acme Dairy Road and Boynton Beach Boulevard. We were hoping when that happened, that was going to be a site-specific. There was nowhere else that this was going to be able to happen as far as self-storage was considered. This 99,000 square feet of additional square footage in the ag reserve is allowed because of the location as close as it is to Atlantic Avenue and Lyons Road being a major intersection, correct?
Is that for myself or for staff?
For staff. You know, again, you know, we let something slide through as far as taking, you know, self-storage, square footage out of the commercial cap. And now we're getting bitten the butt again with more self-storage being built in the ag reserve, more square footage, more things to build on what was open space.
Before you...
Are there any other sites now that can also build storage facilities? I mean, basically, we can have them popping up on every corner because they're not included in the commercial cap.
One second, staff. Commissioner, do you have a question for the applicants?
Well, whoever wants to answer it.
Well, I think...well, what I'd like to see happen is if we have questions for the applicants, let's ask those questions, and then staff is going to follow them, and then we can proceed to query staff at that time. But right now, I'm asking for any questions directed to the applicant specifically.
Thank you.
If that's okay. Any additional questions from the in-person board members?
I do have a question. It just says that another property of equal or greater size would be replaced with this preserve area. Can you just delineate where that is, those preserve parcels?
Those two preserve parcels are located just to the south. They are two five-acre pieces, just one on the west side of Lyons, one on the east side of Lyons, both adjacent to existing AGR PUD preserves. Actually, I can actually show it to you here.
Because usually with the application, we usually see those preserve parcels.
So right here. So they're outlined, they're green and outlined... Let me have them jump in because it's more animated here. So this guy here that's outlined in the black, the green there, as well as this piece here. So one is just on that Linton Boulevard extension just close to the Turnpike. The other one over just off of Lyons there, adjacent to those GL developments.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the in-person members? I'm going to turn now to WebEx. Do we have any questions from our members attending via WebEx? All right. Hearing none. Do we have a presentation by staff?
Yes, we do. This will be with Scott Sorino, Planner, one with the Planning Division.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry about that. Good morning. Scott Sorino with the Planning Division. This is a multi-part amendment request in the ag reserve tier for three parcels located on the southeast corner of Atlantic Avenue and Lyons Road. The Fearing site, shown in pink, and the Seneca site, shown in yellow, are two sites that received Commercial Low future land use in 2016 and 2017. The sites are currently built with commercial uses and have unutilized square footage remaining. The first part of the amendment request is to reduce the allowable square footage on the sites through conditions of approval. This will allow the unutilized square footage to be assigned to Atlantic Commercial and Self-Storage site, which is requesting commercial without increasing the cap. The commercial cap is unique to the ag reserve tier and is established to ensure that commercial does not exceed local demand and thereby serve as a draw from outside of the tier. By 2019, the current cap of 1,015,000 square feet has largely been reached with approvals within the tier. The proposed amendments for Fearing and Seneca will release 13,444 square feet of commercial within the cap to be utilized by Atlantic Commercial and Self-Storage site. The Atlantic Commercial site, shown in purple, is 9.89 acres, and the applicant has requested the amendment from Agriculture Reserve to Commercial Low. The site is currently a preserve area for the Sussman PUD. The associated zoning application is proposing to relocate the preserve area, rezone to multiple-use plan development, and develop 9,100 square feet of retail, 3,709 square feet of car wash, and almost 100,000 square feet of self-storage uses. Subject site are located at a commercial node with the Del Ray Marketplace at the northwest corner and two pre-existing commercial sites to the northeast corner. To the east of the subject site is the Del Ray Lakes Estates, and to the south are various agricultural uses within the agricultural reserve with the future land use of agricultural reserve. The amendment is located adjacent to a commercial node, and it's consistent with the policies in the comprehensive plan related to the commercial location in the agricultural reserve tier. Specifically, the site is located within a quarter mile of one of the two commercial mixed-use centers, which encourages the clustering of non-residential uses in the ag reserve tier. In addition, the amendment falls within the commercial cap established in the tier. During the public notification process, the Planning Division mailed notices to property owners within 500 feet and interested parties. Staff held an informational meeting on January 4th, 2022, and no members of the public attended. As of this morning, no correspondence has been received. Staff is recommending approval with conditions of this amendment. The conditions include for Atlantic Commercial site to limit the maximum square feet of commercial and self-storage uses, require vehicular connectivity to the west, and require adoption concurrent with the zoning application. And for the Seneca and Fearing sites, conditions will reduce the maximum square feet allowed for the site. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right. I know we have questions for staff, so I'm going to turn first to Commissioner Braas. You were asking questions. You had questions that you wanted to address with staff?
Thank you. You know, this is just...and this is going to happen later on on our agenda. This is where we thought, oh, it's really not a bad idea, you know... This is where we thought, oh, it's really not a bad idea, you know, it's, it's site-specific, it's not going to turn around and really happen, you know, any other place, you know, there's really not a lot of locations where this can happen. And boom, we got 100,000 square feet more of buildings happening in the ag reserve. How many other locations are there where they could slip in another storage facility that we had never intended happening?
So we do have specific criteria, and one of those is the major intersections. And within the ag reserve, it's four, which is Boynton Beach and Lyons, Boynton Beach and State Road 7, Atlantic Avenue and Lyons, and Atlantic Avenue and State Road 7.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions from the in-person members?
I have a question, please, for staff. We're being asked to approve a maximum of 193,864 square feet of self-storage, but you said there's going to be 100,000 square feet of storage. So we're being asked to approve the 193, that's for something for future or what?
The 193 was the condition based on the, the traffic study. So the traffic study went up to the .45 FAR, and when, not the square footage that the applicant is requesting, but in their site plan, they're only showing 99,000 square feet.
Well, if, if they're going to build the 99,000 square feet, it would be nice to approve that amount, but they want this 193,000. Can you just maybe respond to that?
Well, we typically only limit the square footage for a few reasons in the agricultural reserve tier. One, for meeting the commercial cap, which is related to the retail, so we're limiting it to 13,000 some odd square feet because of the commercial cap. And then we don't usually place conditions related to square footage unless it's related to traffic. So again, with the traffic study, they showed the .45 FAR, so that was the maximum they could do on the site.
Maybe Jeff Burfey wanted to say something?
Sure, yeah. So the zoning application, when it goes to the BCC, that's an MUPD, we're going to be capped at the 100,000 square feet. Now, from a, from a land use perspective, we, we have no, we have no plans to develop at the, at the 193. If, if this board would like to condition it to what is matching on the zoning, we're okay with that.
Yeah, so we can advise the Board of County Commissioners that we'd like a 100,000 square feet maximum. We could do that in a motion if, if somebody, or if somebody makes one. Thank you.
Mr. Bros, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, that 193, you know, jumping from 99, 459, you know, is a little scary. And if we could entertain a motion to cap it at what they are proposing, I would feel a little bit of comfort. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions by the members in person before I turn to WebEx? Commissioner Veniker?
No, 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 no.
I have one question, but I do want to give my colleagues on WebEx a chance to, to ask questions of staff first. Are there any questions from our members attending via WebEx?
No, not at this time.
Okay. My only question is in regard to the potential health risk to the surrounding area. So I heard the applicant indicate they're going to put a layer of filler, sod, whatever the term is they use, over the, the area in question before beginning the construction. But is there any risk to the underlying land being disturbed? Has, has staff done any investigation into the possible risk to the disturbance of the, of the brownfield area? And if so, what are those risks? And what's the probability of, of some sort of health detriment to the surrounding area, the residents of the area?
Pardon me. Through the Planning Division staff review, that's not part of the future land use application review, but during the zoning application, there will, and the brownfields application through our Department of Housing Economic Development should be able to mitigate for those issues. We recently had the seven, the 700-unit development that came before the Planning Commission found MUPD right on Okeechobee and some of the similar questions of landfill, you know, we want to make sure that those things are not going to affect the neighbors. So there are processes in place that other departments and, as well as divisions are able to review, but that's not for the future land use application.
And just to clarify, so DEP will be the ones that will be monitoring that, and we won't release any building permits until DEP is satisfied that everything's been taken care of.
Okay.
It's not our technical staff that's going to review it per se, it's a DEP.
Thank you. Just as, I guess, just a point of clarification, this is the first application that I can recall where we used the term brownfield. Brownfield ever came up. So I just want to make sure from my own knowledge, potential health concerns to the surrounding area, the impact, impact of construction, that's, that's not really something that we are charged to consider as, as the Planning Commission Board?
Not for a future land use application. I mean, we, we do take a look at it and make sure that there are departments, you know, that IRM is involved, that other departments are involved in taking a look at it. But as Ramsey said, yes, we, you know, that's a DEP review with the applicant.
And also as part of the Florida Building Code and our local amendments, impacts from construction, we will be taking care of that. So if there are impacts from construction, no matter what they are, we, we will be taking care of that if they are brought to our attention. So we have that limited control on that, but DEP will be handling the most of it.
Thanks, thanks for hearing that, fogging this up for me. Now we're going to turn to public comments. We have two in-person speakers, Mr. Drew Martin, if you wouldn't mind stepping to the podium to your left, and then Mr. Jim Knight, if you wouldn't mind stepping to the podium to your right. Stand at three minutes per speaker. Mr. Martin, please state your name and your address and commence.
Drew Martin. I live at 1015 North M in Lake Worth. I'm here on behalf of the Locksatchi Group of the Sierra Club. I'm the Conservation Chair, and I am an official representative of the Sierra Club. I mean, when the whole ag reserve plan was developed, the idea was we were going to have primarily agriculture, wetlands, open space, and some housing, and that any other activities were based on the needs of the people in the agricultural reserve who are living there, or the people working there, and that everything else would be outside the ag reserve. I don't think that self-storage is an essential need. I don't think people living, I mean, people can drive outside the ag reserve to store things. The problem is, is that this is death by a thousand cuts because, as Commissioner Bros said, you let it happen somewhere else, then someone else is going to ask for it. So you're basically taking agricultural land that's designated AGR and turning it into something else. For a need that's really not necessary. Well, what's the problem? The problem is you already have too much traffic out there. And the traffic and the congestion is impacting the quality of life. It's impacting the people who farm out there. You'll probably approve this because the staff is recommending it. But I mean, the point is, this is completely unnecessary in the ag reserve. Why do you even have any commercial? I don't even understand why there's any commercial in the ag reserve. I can understand some shopping, I can understand some needed things, why, you know, but these are things that people could drive outside the ag reserve to get. People don't go to self-storage every day, they don't need to go to self-storage to get quart of milk. So you're basically just reducing the quality of life of all the people that live there now, adding more congestion, more traffic, more light. They're going to save some other piece of land that probably is already saved and tell you that this is an exchange. They'll probably come back in five years and ask to build on that. So I, I don't, you know, I'm, you know, you may approve this, but I don't see any need whatsoever. I don't see any need for this commercial, and I don't see that the applicant has demonstrated any need absolutely. And I think part of your job is to evaluate whether there's a need for something because you are the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida. I am in support of this proposed development. It's good planning practices. The connectivity through the existing centers there keeps the cars internally as they're going to the different shops in the center there. If you go to Joseph's or the Warren, it's like trying, going to the Warren is like trying to get a tee time today. In the middle of season, go try to get a tee time at a golf course, and it's almost impossible. There's a need out here for these services and so forth, and that's what the residents want to have out there. Otherwise, you'd see 100 residents here screaming, saying they oppose this. As for the development, and what they're doing is encapsulating, I'm not an environmental engineer or whatever else, but what they're doing is actually protecting the residents nearby by encapsulating the contamination that's there. And that's what DEP has the rules and regulations for. It's no different than when a lot of the other farms have been built out here, and they had arsenic on the properties. They turn around and put that underneath the roads and the building pads, et cetera. So I'm in support of this. I think it's good planning practices, it's at the right location. Thank you for your time, and Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you very much. We have received three emails, and I don't think we need to read those into the record. I would just ask, I'm assuming, Director, that it's permitted just to simply submit those to you for inclusion in the record?
Correct. And I believe that those may have been also directed for the, the second item of the agenda.
Two of them are for the second item. All three are for this first item. Yes. All right. So at this time, do we have any question? No, sorry.
I'll make a motion if you'd like.
Yes, yes.
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Excuse me. I think staff and the applicant get an opportunity to respond to any, any public comment.
That was where I was trying to catch my thoughts. I apologize. Does the applicant or staff care to respond to either of the, the speakers? No from staff? The applicant, would you like to comment? Okay, all right. At this time, Commissioner Veniker, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application with the conditions delineated in Exhibit 1A, 1B, and 1C, with the one change from the maximum in Exhibit 1A of 100,000 square feet of self-storage uses.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any, any under readiness? My members on WebEx, do you have any, any concerns with this motion? All right.
No, we're good.
All right. Since I can't really see anyone, I guess we can, can we just do a roll call?
Certainly.
Thank you.
John Carr?
Yes.
Barbara Roth?
Yes.
Lori Venicor?
Yes.
Penny Pompey?
Yes.
Dagmar Bros?
Yes.
Sarah Perdue?
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson? Angela Vaughn?
Yes.
Marcia Hayden?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
Eric Royal?
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson?
Yes.
Kara Kopp?
No.
May I ask again to repeat, Kylie Harper Larson? I could not hear the response.
My vote is yes.
Thank you. Glenn Gromen? And Spencer Siegel? Those two members are out?
Yes.
It is for yes to go forward.
All right. So now we'll move to Item 4A1. That's the text and map series amendment initiation for the Indian Trails Grove Ag Reserve Exchange privately proposed text and map series initiation.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Jennifer Morton with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture, and I'm sure you're all wondering, where is Kevin Rattery? Well, I'm happy to report he does not have COVID, he is actually on vacation, but we have our entire team here with us this morning. Lauren McClellan with our office, Colleen Walter with Urban Design Studios, and then Cliff Hertz with Nelson Mullins. We have a short nine-minute video that summarizes the GL Homes proposal that is subject to the request to initiate before you this morning. This video was presented to the Board of County Commissioners on December 15 of last year. At that meeting, a majority of the board concurred that GL Homes should move forward with submission of associated applications, providing a full detail of our proposal so to continue discussion and to further develop the concept. To be clear, the, the board did not vote to approve the proposal, nor did they vote to disapprove the proposal. Rather, the board voted, gave direction to staff to move forward and allow GL to submit applications so that staff could analyze the proposal and provide recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners through the normal plan amendment process. This concept is discussed in the video and the technical, and is technically presented in the staff report. If you could play the video, please.
Agriculture and water resources have always been a top priority for Palm Beach County, protecting the land and water for generations to come. Under a proposal from GL Homes, the county can substantially increase its land holdings to further these two priorities. The GL proposal will leverage two of the most significant initiatives ever undertaken by the county, the agricultural reserve and the bond issue. Before we present the proposal, let's review these two initiatives. This shaded area is the agricultural reserve. The reserve is bordered by Florida's Turnpike to the east and by Clintmore Road to the south. In 2000, the Board of County Commissioners approved the master plan for the agricultural reserve. The goal of the master plan was to preserve and enhance agricultural activity and environmental and water resources in the ag reserve. In 1999, a $150 million bond was passed to acquire land throughout all of Palm Beach County for water resources, agriculture, and other purposes. The county spent $88 million of the bond proceeds to purchase 2,355 acres in the agricultural reserve. The balance of the bond proceeds were spent outside the ag reserve, primarily on environmentally sensitive land in North County, with the largest purchase shown here. The bond was clearly a county-wide initiative. Under the county ag reserve rules, development options were established as the mechanism to ensure preservation. While the bond issue created 2,355 acres of preservation, development has created over 7,000 acres of preservation in the ag reserve. Of the 7,000 acres of preservation, GL Homes preserved over 6,000 acres as a direct result of its developments. Before we present the proposal, let's explore the most significant property in Palm Beach County for its combination of agriculture, water resources, and ecological potential, the Indian Trails Grove land owned by GL Homes. Indian Trails Grove encompasses 4,872 acres. The property is bordered on the east by Seminole Pratt Whitney Road, on the south by 60th Street North, and to the north by Northlake Boulevard. In 2016, GL Homes agreed to deed 640 acres of the property to the Indian Trails Improvement District for a future reservoir to improve flood protection for the acreage. Also in 2016, GL Homes received approval from Palm Beach County to build 3,897 homes. Today, Indian Trails Grove is a very active farm. In the most recent growing season, the property was being farmed for green beans, corn, tomatoes, sugarcane, and 27 kinds of Chinese vegetables. In addition to Indian Trails Grove's agricultural contribution, the property's proximity to major canals creates a unique opportunity to make a positive impact on water issues that plague Palm Beach County. Palm Beach County's water problems have taken center stage in the media recently.
Water advisory is in effect for parts of Palm Beach County.
As West Palm Beach-
As West Palm Beach emerges from its recent drinking water crisis.
High levels of the blue-green algae from the C-51 canal.
The canals adjacent to the Indian Trails Grove property directly connect or have the potential to connect to significant water bodies and ecosystems, including the Loxahatchee River, the Grassy Waters Preserve, and the Lake Worth Lagoon. The GL Homes proposal will further the intent of the bond issue and attain countywide objectives with respect to agriculture and water resources. GL Homes proposes to deed 1,600 acres of the Indian Trails Grove property to Palm Beach County, and the county would have the discretion to preserve the land in agriculture, in water resources, or in some combination of the two. As a part of this proposal, GL Homes will also reduce 1,250 homes at Indian Trails Grove. In exchange, GL Homes proposes to build on a portion of the 682-acre Hyder West Preserve it owns in the ag reserve. The Hyder West property is located north of Clintmore Road on US 441 and is surrounded by development. Specifically, GL Homes proposes to build 1,000 market-rate homes on approximately 451 acres of Hyder West. The balance of the land will be used for community benefit. 126 acres of the property would remain in preserve, with the northern 100 acres reserved for a passive park. And the remaining 105 acres will be used for civic purposes, with 30 acres deeded to Palm Beach County for a public civic site bank. The county civic site could be used to address many civic needs identified in southwest Palm Beach County. GL Homes will retain 75 acres for private civic uses, the majority of which shall be used for workforce housing. Housing has become less attainable for a substantial portion of the workforce over the past decade in Palm Beach County, and the housing shortage has been exacerbated by the COVID pandemic and rising house prices. To help address this growing need, GL Homes will commit to build 250 workforce housing units on Hyder West. To summarize the proposal, this side-by-side graphic shows the 1,600 acres at Indian Trails Grove the county will receive in exchange for allowing development on 451 acres of Hyder West and 105 acres dedicated for civic uses. The county will receive almost three times the amount of land to further its objectives. And to be clear, this land is not a set aside. Instead, the county would own 1,600 acres of the Indian Trails Grove land. The county could choose to utilize it all or a portion of the land to further its agricultural goals. The county could also take advantage of the property's unique location to provide water resource benefits. Specifically, the county could capture water from the LA Canal and create a flowway through the 1,600 acres into the MO Canal, and from there, connect to the C-18 Canal to improve freshwater flow to the headwaters of the Loxahatchee River and aiding in the prevention of saltwater intrusion. Additionally, the county could also decrease harmful discharges into the Lake Worth Lagoon by intercepting and treating Lake Okeechobee releases and excess stormwater runoff on the 1,600 acres that would otherwise make its way to the Lake Worth Lagoon via the C-51 Canal. Lastly, the county has the opportunity to improve water storage and water quality treatment for the Grassy Waters Preserve. This is accomplished by capturing and cleansing water from the LA Canal on the 1,600 acres and distributing the water through the M Canal into the Grassy Waters Preserve. Cleaner water in the Grassy Waters Preserve means less chance for algae blooms, and cleaner discharges into grassy waters will result in more dependable water supply for the residents of West Palm Beach. In conclusion, the proposal provides several benefits to Palm Beach County. GL Homes will generate over $500 million of additional tax base for Palm Beach County through the 1,000 market-rate homes it will build on the Hyder West land. GL Homes will also build 250 workforce homes to address the workforce housing crisis. And GL Homes will donate land for a county park. GL Homes will deed a 30-acre public civic site bank to Palm Beach County. Most importantly, GL Homes will deed 1,600 acres of prime preservation land at Indian Trails Grove. The GL Homes proposal leverages the success of the agricultural reserve and builds on the legacy of protecting land for agriculture and water resources throughout Palm Beach
Just in conclusion, staff is supporting the initiation of the text amendments, and we hope that you will agree with both the board and the staff that this proposal is worthy of further review and analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the presentation by staff. I apologize, last time I kind of got the order mixed up, but we'll, staff, please state your name and proceed, and good morning.
Good morning. Brian Davis with the Planning Division. I'm going to take this off. I want to wish everyone a happy new year. It's good to be back, and we have a very interesting one for you today for consideration. This is the Indian Trails Grove Agricultural Reserve Exchange. It's a private text initiation. You have a sort of rudimentary staff analysis of it. This is not a typical item that you see. This is a privately initiated text amendment, and as such, we don't have the normal data and analysis to present to you. Text amendments through the introduction administration element require board initiation, and this is for all text amendments and map series amendments to the plan. I'm talking about the maps that are associated in the conference plan, not the future land use atlas. Those can be privately initiated, which we also may be looking at. This initiation would authorize the staff to process the request to accept associated land use atlas amendments and begin the process and the analysis that you are normally accustomed to seeing at your hearings. I want to be absolutely clear, initiation does not indicate approval. It is simply an authorization for staff to begin work at board direction. And so you would get then a full staff report and a recommendation at a future public hearing if the item is initiated. So a note on the process. This is phase one of the text initiation. The applicant has submitted a conceptual text amendment. That is what you find in your backup material for the staff report. And the idea is to revise the conference plan that would allow for the submittal of a site-specific amendment, but they need significant text amendments to actually talk about what you just saw in their presentation. And so in the future, there would be a future land use atlas amendment that would correspond to this, which is a requirement in multiple zoning development orders. So this is the very dry version over the very sort of glitzy version that they showed you. Just by way of reminder, back in 2016, some of you may recall this, this was the Indian Trails Grove Conference of Plan Amendment. It's about 4,800-plus acres of land. It was one of the last of the so-called Central Western Community Sector Plan parcels. At that time, the amendment was to give it a Western Communities Residential Future Land Use designation. There was a bunch of text amendments that went along with it to establish an overlay in the rural tier to give it a gross density of .8 units per acre, and there was an adopting conceptual plan and ordinance that made all this so with considerable conditions of approval. And that set up the future development plan for the county through the process, and that's the approval that has been out there from a land use perspective since 2016 and 2019 as a zoning approval. And so this is the northern geography, again, just to emphasize the rural tier. And then this is the Hyder West location in the agricultural reserve tier, and I want to just make sure that everyone's aware of what we're talking about. We're talking about two completely different parts of the county that are proposed to be linked, and we'll draw this out. This is the Hyder West area. It is not proposed for a site-specific amendment as we understand it now, but it is proposed to be affected by text amendments, which are the items before you. This area is roughly 680 acres in land area. It has an agricultural reserve flu, as is in that tier. There is no site-specific amendment proposed, and the areas currently preserve areas for ag reserve PUDs for multiple PUDs. Some proposed, most of them are existing. And I also want to note, as they had indicated in their presentation, there is a significant amount of land that is affected with the bond, but none of this is involved in this proposal. This is all privately owned land, and we're talking about that area west of State Road 7 at the southwest corner of the agricultural reserve. So the private text amendment, the applicant is requesting to revise objectives and policies. And this is a very high level, I'm not going to go into all the things that's in the background, but this is sort of the, is it okay to initiate this? They're looking to revise policies relative to the Western Communities residential overlay, the land use designation. There was a lot of specifics that govern the approval and the development orders that followed, but also they're looking for the objectives and policies pertaining to the agricultural reserve plan developments. There is also a proposal to establish a new overlay called the West Hyder Overlay in the agricultural reserve to address the issues that pertain to allowing development west of State Road 7 as a development area and for institutional uses. Both things are currently prohibited in the plan and the regulations today. And then finally, there would be sort of an administrative item that would be associated with that would be to add that new overlay onto the map series maps in the conference of plan. If the item is initiated, there would then be, along with the initiated text amendment, the site-specific item, which would pertain to the Indian Trails Grove, that area up in the rural tier, about 5,000 acres, to amend the conceptual plan and the conditions of approval. They already have the land use designation. It would be a modification of that approval to do all of the other things that they had talked about. It would be a reduction of about 33% of the units and the overall development intensity, the non-residential. Would reduce it from about 3,900 units to a little over 2,600 units, and then the corresponding decrease in intensity from 350,000 square feet of non-residential to 233,500 square feet. And this would also mean considerable zoning action would be needed. There would be a series of development order amendments, new development orders, six development order amendments for existing ag reserve PUDs to effectively replace their already established preserves. There would be two new development orders, as we understand it and the concept, for the new Hyder West ag reserve PUDs for those two new ones, the civic and the age-restricted one that are west of State Road 7. And then there would finally be another development order amendment for the Indian Trails Grove approval to reduce the units, as would be called forth in the site-specific. And finally, there would then be corresponding Unified Land Development Code amendments necessary to do this. So this is a very complex and unusual project, to say the least, if it's initiated. At the highest level, and this is about as much detail as we can go into, these are the issues that we've identified. These are covered in your staff report. As I've indicated, it would link the Indian Trails Grove with the ag reserve tier. This is something we very rarely see linkages between tiers, other than like in the TDR program, and it's like sending areas versus receiving areas. There's very limited notions of this tier relates to that tier, other than development here or less development there. It would allow the clustering from density that's already approved on Indian Trails Grove to be placed in the ag reserve tier. It increases the overall residential potential in the ag reserve, and it would reduce the amount of preserved land in the tier, just straight facts as we understand them. It would allow for two new 60-40 ag reserve PUDs with development areas and institutional uses west of State Road 7, but it would also provide something that's not yet required in the tier, something that's already been looked at based on the prior workshop with the board back in October of workforce housing. They're proposing in advance of that to give us 250 units as part of this. But there's also an issue of entitlement. The Western Communities Residential, the Indian Trails Grove approval has a density of .8 units. The ag reserve works on a one-unit-per-acre ratio, so there could be a slightly different exchange rate involved if this comes to pass. So it's not necessarily a one-to-one, this acre is this acre. It's going to be a little bit more, if you want to think in round numbers, for every four acre or four units you would get transferred, it would be five acres of land. Of course, I just zipped through my entire proposal. Indian Trails Grove, the issues and implications we've identified there. It would reduce the proposed onsite development by 33%, as I've already gone over. Would be a reduction of 1,285 units and about a little over 112,000 square feet of non-residential uses. It would certainly reduce the traffic impacts in the Central Western Communities and the rural excrement tiers. That's always been an issue with any of the development talked about out there. So in that sense, there could be some improvement. It would allow Indian Trails Grove land to satisfy the PUD preserve requirements in the ag reserve, and it would provide for, and this is their, I think their central thrust, as you picked up, the increased land for water resources and/or agricultural uses at the Indian Trails Grove site. There would be a net increase of 512 acres, and their critical distinction that they noticed, this would be land that would be owned by the county in their proposal. The prior area was 1,068. That was always to come to the county under a conservation, we would not own the underlying fee. It was going to be part of the open space arrangement. This is a different thing, and as they've outlined, there are a number of components that could be put on that 1,600 acres that are not yet possible because we, one, do not own the land, but also they're at the very early planning stages, and we would need to own the land, as we understand it, to be able to go forward and pursue other options. But those are critical to addressing water management needs and/or water quality issues in Central and Northern Palm Beach County. I want to make sure that that's absolutely clear. That is the primary benefit that they have outlined. Furthermore, they propose to eliminate the onsite requirement at the Indian Trails Grove. They had to provide 390 or 10% of the units onsite. They're proposing to look at a version of the exchange program or to potentially just build them offsite. And then finally, the 640-acre Indian Trail Improvement District impoundment area is proposed to be kept. As you've seen on page nine of your staff report, the staff conclusion is it's appropriate to amend or to initiate the amendment, simply because it provides the opportunity for staff to obtain more information to fully evaluate and answer the questions, and it gives the board a chance to consider indirect policy on this before we undertake the detailed analysis. And then finally, it would also allow for an assessment of public facilities and impacts, the full policy analysis possible with the Phase 2 and site-specific amendment. Therefore, the recommendation is to initiate the amendment, to bring it forward in the course of this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions and go over any other information you may have.
Well, actually, I think we'll turn to public comments first, and then if we have any questions for you or the applicant, we'll raise those at that time.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, sir. First up, we have Mr. Drew Martin. I think I saw him step out, so I'm going to call Mr. Jim Knight's name. Oh, Mr. Martin is here. I'm sorry, he came back in. My apologies. Mr. Martin and then Mr. Knight, if you can step to the other podium, that'll be fine.
Chairman, before I begin my comments, can I ask if you received a letter from our attorney, Robert Hartzell?
Yes, we did.
And is there any way we could get that right into the record so that the...
No, due to the length of it, it would see the three minute, so no, it's...
Okay. Well, I'm just, how many people on the planning board have read this letter?
Mr. Martin, do you have public comments, sir?
Just only dressing for the...
Yes, but I mean, it's important because we spend a lot of money on that. Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Sierra Club, Loxahatchee Group. I don't support staff recommendation because I don't think this is a good idea, and I don't think it needs to be investigated. It needs to be turned down. There's nothing in this that helps anybody. I loved the little video, but it doesn't do anything for agriculture because it takes active agriculture land and along State Road 7 to the west that is buffering the Loxahatchee Wildlife Refuge and turns it into development. It opens up another, Indian Trails has nothing to do with the ag reserve. It's not in the same tier. The whole purpose in the establishment of the ag reserve was to create a separate area that would not allow any development credits to come from outside the ag reserve. Why was that done? Because when the county had the bond issue and they couldn't purchase the 10,000 acres which originally they had hoped to purchase, the only way to preserve agriculture was to limit development, and they limited development by stating that you could only develop on 40% and you had to preserve 60%. And originally, it was even 80%. This undoes everything in that agreement. It provides no benefit. The rest of this is complete pie in the sky. You already have the Mecca property, thanks to the Sierra Club, when we sued the county to keep that property from being developed. I'm sorry that staff recommends this, but I'm sure that they have no choice. I'm so disappointed because GL Homes spins every single one of these things as basically saying, oh, the commission is for this. When you, if you vote for this, they're going to tell everybody, oh, the planning board's for this, because they consider every single thing as, you know, being in favor. I mean, the... I mean, the commission really, I think that a lot of the commissioners were very reluctant to move forward. Two, I think it was like two or three years ago, this was completely turned down. And one commissioner insisted it be brought back up. I see no benefit in this investigation. It just is opening up the door, it's going to give the impression that the county is in favor of this, and what's going to happen is if this goes forward, it's going to destroy the ag reserve. It's going to destroy the ag reserve. There's nothing positive for the ag reserve in this proposal. I question a lot, as an environmentalist and a former co-chair of the Everglades Coalition, I question a lot of the environmental benefits that GL Homes is touting as either something that'll never happen or are relatively unlikely to happen. And why you would move forward, I have no idea. I think the county should just say no now and end this.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Knight?
All right, again, Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida. I am in support of exploring this for two main reasons. One is, we're an entire county, we have to look at water quality as an entire county, not just as a portion of the county. And the second is, those 250 workforce housing units, I hope they're for-sale product, because that's what we really need, is the for-sale product. And if they develop those, that range is from roughly $200,000 to $300,000 per unit that they would sell for. And the ag reserve right now, you probably start, maybe you can get a new home at $800,000, realistically, it's a million-plus, and this would be a huge benefit to that area and the people, there are a lot of people that are working out there, there's quite a bit of commercial along the corridor of Atlantic and so forth, and this would be a place for those people to live out there that work out there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Next up, we have Ms. Arlene, I believe this is Bency?
Berry.
Berry.
As in blueberries.
My apologies.
I live in the Equestrian Preserve in Wellington on Draft Horse Lane, and I also belong to the Sierra Club. I support what Drew Martin says, I speak to my neighbors, I speak to my friends who live in Palm Beach County, other residents, everybody knows developing, development, everybody knows the bulldozer. I speak to people who are behind those bulldozers, and they tell me how upset they are, just clear-cutting Palm Beach County and seeing the animals run away and having nowhere to go. And so if we love animals, we love plants, we love greenery, we should keep what we have, we should keep our heritage. The swap is a gimmick. Let the buyer beware, isn't that an old saying? When you go buy a car or any other piece of merchandise, let's be skeptical. We're all smart. And so GL Homes is doing what they want to do, they're trying to convince us of their point of view, which is okay. But we can look at examples before us, like Chicago, which has its beautiful green spaces, it's a densely built-up city, but it also has a lot of open space. And we have urban areas that can still be developed, what about the whole old Hyalea site, I believe it's on 43rd Street, the Greyhound racetrack, what is it doing? It's falling apart. That whole area can be built up, we can support the people who are coming without going into our rural areas, our green areas. And some of the reasoning for destroying the farms or losing the farms are not convincing, because there are new ways of farming, there are new practices people are using. The new generation is using permaculture, biodynamic and organic means to raise food, to grow crops. There's all sorts of different things that that area can be used for that'll be beneficial to our population, to the residents, for example, flood control and drought control. Both of those we need open areas for. If we look to examples in Netherlands or Holland, they keep open fields around them, so they just let the ocean come in and run across the open fields and they absorb it. So if we look into some of these newer methods, because we have to respond to climate change, we'll see that these green areas have complex benefits which we can really trust and continue to grow with. And at the same time, we can develop our urban tier that's well-planned and will absorb high-density population. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Before turning to my fellow commissioners on WebEx, I would like to note that the law firm of Robert and Hartzell, PA, specifically Heidi Mahaffey, sent a letter dated January 13 in opposition to this text amendment. Also, we received an email from Beth Rappaport on Thursday, January 13 of this year as well, opposing this proposed text amendment. Now at this time, I want to open the floor for the question-and-answer session amongst the commissioners. Again, any commissioners on WebEx, if you have any questions, please proceed at this time.
This is Rick, I do have a question for staff, please.
Yes, sir.
Hello?
Yes, Rick, we can hear you, proceed, please.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, my question for staff is, you know, given the complex nature of this project, I'm going to assume that considerable resources are going to have to be expended, in any event, just to go through this process. Is there an estimation on how much time this is going to take before it would be in a position to be brought back to this commission for further review and next steps?
This is one of the bigger applications that we've received, and, you know, I do want to point out that initiation does not mean staff approval. It's kind of unprecedented that this particular item came to the board first as a discussion, so the board did direct us to go ahead and move forward with this in a very timed manner, so that everything could be done within this year by October. So there is considerable amount of work that the staff will need to take, both in the planning and the zoning divisions, meetings with all of the applicants, the applicant, the agent, GL Homes has hired a number of different consulting firms and agents, so we have not done the estimation of all of the hours. But this is not just a single application, it is going to take a considerable amount of time. Due to the fact that it's in two different tiers, you know, we have two massive areas, previous applications, the six or more zoning applications, so I can't even imagine how many hours it's going to take, but it'll take a while. So we're having to put back in the backburner some of the projects that we wanted to do, like take a look at density within the urban suburban tier and increasing that and seeing where those major corridors are. We're also putting on hold some of our work on the compatibility, hopefully we'll be able to do that soon. And then we also have a number of other ag reserve items that are, you'll see later on in the county-initiated text amendments, that have going to be considerable amount of work as well. So, yeah, we're going to have a busy year.
Well, and if I may follow up, and see, there raises my point, this is going to be such a humongous undertaking that other projects and other needs are going to suffer for, lack of a better phrase, lack of manpower and just so many hours in a day. And it almost behooves a gut check at this point as to where the opinions and the votes of the commissioners I serve with are, because it's only going to come back to that at some point in the future, whether it's eight or 10 months from now or a year from now. So this is a huge undertaking, both from a manpower standpoint, from a financial standpoint, and the fact that other projects may get shelved or be further delayed gives me concern. Thank you.
Any additional commissioners on WebEx that have questions? Please state your name and proceed.
Yes, this is Kylie, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Hi, good morning. I wanted to ask the staff if they had considered the climatology that's associated with the proposed land exchange and also the water resources. As all of you know, agriculture is key and critical to the survival of not just our world, but also the economics of our county and our positioning. And I wanted to know if the staff had made that consideration yet, or if they were thinking about it. I do applaud ingenuity and creativity always on the part of GL and the county, but I would like to know if they've considered it.
We have our Water Resource Manager, Jeremy McBryan, he is actually unfortunately out of the office today, but we do have him as part of this team of working through the issues, because if this does move forward, if this does get adopted eventually, and those 1,600 acres come to the county in the northern central area of the county, the Water Resource Manager is going to play a big part in that, and, you know, owning and maintaining and coming up with the process for developing that area for water resources. So that is going to be part of the application if this gets initiated. As far as climatology, we haven't had any kind of discussions on that, but we are, of course, also speaking with our Office of Resilience, with Megan Houston as the director, so that we can have a full, comprehensive plan and discussion throughout this process if this application gets initiated.
Thank you very much, Patricia. I would like to make it part of the record that the land in Indian River Trail historically is much colder than the land at Hyde West. And if we're talking about an exchange even for water resources and/or agricultural production, that that needs to be part of serious consideration and discussion, since the bond issue was to preserve agricultural land, not preserve water resource and agricultural land. It's necessarily, even though there is an acreage benefit of three times the amount of overall acreage, it is not, based on my knowledge right now, an even exchange in the slightest for agricultural production, and that begs the question of serious concern. Thank you very much.
Commissioner...
Chair Angela Van, I had a question.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My quick question is more for staff. So usually, the normal process was they would come to us first for initiation, go to the county, board the county commissioners, and then come back. So in essence, the commission has already said they approve initiating this request. Am I wrong with, am I correct, and that's what I heard?
Well, they didn't approve the initiation just yet, they wanted to have, the direction from the board in November 3 was to have staff speak with the applicant, gather the information, and then present it to the board for the board's consideration, but not as a motion or any kind of a process that we have established right now. So basically, the board told us December 15 that they would like to have this as part of a discussion, it was not initiation, we didn't have an application, it was just a presentation from the applicant. So this is the formal process of initiating it. For Planning Commission, February 2, we'll go to the board for their consideration of initiation at that time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any additional questions from our WebEx attendees?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Kara Kath, if I may.
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. So it was an expensively-produced video that told us GL Homes is committed to water and the environment. I personally have expertise in urban planning, water management, Everglades protection, and in my very strong opinion, there's no question, the best thing the county could do for our water supply is to not approve this application. It's a greenwash proposal, so my question is, you know, GL Homes is not an environmental protection agency, a water management agency, a conservation nonprofit, but we have those expertise on staff at Palm Beach County. Has ERM had any review of this proposal? I would love to hear from the county's water and environmental managers to either substantiate or refute the claims presented. And I realize this is a funny point in the process, because we're initiating further review, and I know that that further review would come down the line, but at this point, we've already heard it would take tremendous investment from the county to even consider this application moving forward, and if this developer wants to claim that part of the benefit here would be an improvement to our water resources, I think we should know whether our water resource staff thinks that's true or not. Certainly, you know, some people may have the purview to approve development for the sake of growth, and if that's your mindset, that's fine. But if we're expected to believe that this will be good for our environment and water, then I think we would need to hear that expertise before we take an additional step forward. So how does that process work, seeing as we're taking this a little bit out of the normal order?
Well, this initiation would allow for that more in-depth discussion and review, and really getting all of the departments on board. They have seen the initial proposal from GL Homes, but we didn't have an application that we can move forward, that we can actually do the data and analysis and bring all of that forward. So I think that's why the board wants to have the discussion and start the initiation process this way. If this gets initiated by the board, then this would come back to the Planning Commission probably in August, and that would give us enough time to have all of those discussions. Jeremy McBryan, the Water Resource Manager, was at the seat at the dais on December 15, so there were some discussions and some preliminary, you know, water resource benefits. The initial application from 2016 or 18 has 1,000 acres, had 1,000 acres already targeted for water resources, and this application would add an additional 600. So those things were contemplated back in 2018. So yes, we've already had preliminary discussions with ERM, Water Resources, parks, and all of the other service providers that would be impacted by this change.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I just, we're in a position where a developer can come to this board and tell us anything they want, and I just want to keep in mind that GL Homes is not a water management expert and environmental expert, they're a luxury home developer seeking to make a profit, so they can tell us whatever they want. It doesn't mean that we have to approve moving ahead with next steps. And I just think that we can thoughtfully consider whether every application deserves our planning staff's time and effort to further review. Certainly, my vote on this one will be not.
Any additional questions from the WebEx attendees? All right, hearing that, I'm going to turn to the in-person commissioners, do we have any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
And then lots to say after, later. First of all, you said that they've already purchased how many acres for water preservation in that area?
640.
Could you clarify who's purchased?
Okay. Well, it's just that, okay, didn't the county already, where those two canals come together from the north? If you could put that back up there. And if this really is a water quality issue, wait, no, wait, okay. Doesn't the county have under contract 450 acres, for 450 acres already with GL, which is in that top corner where the canals come down? Where those two, see the one, I can't see that one.
There's a 640-acre, and I think maybe the applicant can...
It's at the northwest corner, but that was solely for Indian Trail Improvement District for them to use as additional flood control. They have a deed, as I understand it, that is being held in escrow.
Right.
And it's out there, that's not really part of the deal, it's there, it's already, there's no proposal to change that, but that is already for Indian Trails, it's allocated. That transactional part has occurred, they just haven't hit the part where actually the deed formally goes to Indian Trail.
Okay, but it's basically a done deal.
Yeah.
So this is, you know, we're not inventing this, this is already a process that is happening, and this is already has 650 acres that's purchased, well, under contract, to address this water issue. Plus, only $83 million went to purchase property in the agri... Plus, only $83 million went to purchase property in the ag reserve, but then you said there was a bunch of property over in that area that was already also purchased to put the property in preserve, so it will never, ever be developed. So we're already looking at helping the water quality, and my heart goes out to the people that live in Jupiter and whatnot, when you have that green algae stuff and everything growing, and I do want it to be fixed. But what GL is proposing is not going to fix it. We've already been, you've already been working on it. Indian Trails has already been working on it. You've already purchased property. You know, the canal issue, yeah, we need to put something on those canals to be able to siphon the impurities that are coming from the north and from the farms and whatnot. But for GL to get a card that says, okay, well, this is going to help your water issue more, which you're already working on, so that we can put homes in the ag reserve, you're already working on this, you're already, the county is already purchasing, or Indian Trails is already purchasing properties to mitigate this water problem before these thousand-plus acres that GL is proposing taking the units off of.
If I could just clarify, there is no conveyance as of now by like a land deal purchase. There was a requirement in the Land Use Amendment from 2016 to provide 640 acres for ITID purposes. There was also a requirement for another 1,068 acres that would be as open space, but it would be earmarked for this Water Resources and Conservation ag use, but it came to us as a conservation easement. It is a requirement for dedication for whenever they begin developing that. They have not, so it's still their land, it's just a requirement going forward. The problem, as I understood it, in the intervening time from the original 2016 approval to the present day, is there have been a lot of other studies looking at that general area, the L-8, C-51, C-18 basins, looking at hydrologically connecting those areas. And I believe the problem that they had, and I'm paraphrasing what I understand from Mr. McBryan, our Water Resources Manager, is that the county did not have the fee to the land. We did not own the land outright. Therefore, the Water Management District and the Army Corps would not take any proposals seriously, because we never could get enough land for any of the proposals they were contemplating. So it got ruled out of all of that planning. The concept, as I understand it, is with the 1,600, it would give us a chance to go back and reengage the Corps and the Water Management District to talk about looking at a different solution other than trying to pile it up in a reservoir and mecca farms.
Okay, so if Army Corps and South Florida Water Management District thought that this was such an important piece of property, wouldn't they have gone to the state or somewhere or somehow initiated taking this property instead of putting more units into the ag reserve? We've been fighting for the, well, I'm going to save that. That was my question. Sorry. That was my question. If we're already purchasing over 1,700 acres for water conservation, what are we doing with that? Why can't we move forward with that and do better?
It's something, my understating, that the prioritization the Water Management District had when they were looking at that part of their planning was they didn't want to have to go out and acquire land, so they looked at lands that were already in government ownership that they had. It was not something that we, Palm Beach County owned, it was something that we would ultimately get an easement. They're looking at fee ownership, was my understanding. That was the priority. That's why they weren't contemplated. They certainly looked at it, and they studied it. They recognized there was benefits for either quantity issues or quality issues. They just simply didn't think they could hang a whole plan on a conjectural hypothetical future thing that may come to pass. The idea was, if this comes to pass, we get the ownership, then we can go back and start that discussion with them, and it would be a county-initiated discussion with the district.
Thank you. That was my question.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Veniker, then Commissioner Roth.
Okay.
Commissioner Pompeo, you have a question as well?
I do.
My fault, I did not see you. I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So this is just a point of clarification from the staff attorney, if I might, which is, and with all due respect to my fellow commissioners who are very concerned about the workload something like this would cause, it doesn't seem to me that this commission has consideration of the staff workload to be within our purview. While that is something that the board might be involved with, it certainly doesn't seem to be something that we, as a group, should consider in whether we approve or disapprove something. So could I have an opinion on that?
I'm not aware of any specific criteria that you are to consider, so I don't think there's any prohibition on you considering the workload of the staff in your deliberations or your consideration of the issue.
Has it ever been done before?
Has what ever been done before?
A consideration of the staff workload.
Well, you know, this is my first meeting, so I don't know.
Well, as of today.
So with regards to staff workload and staff don't kill me, we just adjust as it comes, but it does take some time to adjust. Obviously, with changing economics and economies, sometimes we have to ramp up, sometimes we ramp down, but I don't think we've ever, and Patricia can correct me if I'm wrong, delayed or stopped a project because we didn't have the manpower. We've somehow always made it work, and we'll continue to do that.
Figure it out.
So it shouldn't be an issue, but yes, it is a tremendous amount of work, and some way, somehow, we will achieve it.
Thank you, Ramsey.
Commissioner Veniker.
Yes, I have a question. The project that Indian Trails Grove took into, within that application, there's 640 acres for the water for the Indian Trails District, correct? And there was, you said 1,068 acres in preserve, correct?
It was 1,068 acres specifically allocated for a use of either water resources or agriculture. There's whole other requirements that we haven't talked about in that for open space that include and go beyond that.
1,068. So that 1,068 acres is part of what they're, want to sell, deed to the county of the 1,600 acres, right? So in effect, what we are dealing with here is the county already has, there is a preserve, that's preserve, 1,068 acres of preserve. So we are talking about 532 acres that we would be owning, and this is the exchange for the 682 acres in the agricultural reserve that they want to build on, correct?
It's going from, 1,068 is current. They're adding 532 acres. The difference is, this 1,068 was to come under a conservation easement. They would still own the underlying fee, it would just be county whatever controlling it, sorry, I'm talking in real estate terms. The difference is, the 1,600 now is proposed to be, county would be given the deed for the entire thing. We would own it in the end, we would have the control. Just to go back to the Hyder West, there is 682-ish acres total in that. I think they're, my understanding of what the proposal is, there's about 100 acres that would still remain in preserve, and there's another, I don't know, 30 or so acres that is probably conservation-worthy, but would either be in a development area or something else, but it would stay conservation. So just to kind of keep all the conservation labels clear.
I just have one other question. Doesn't the county have some control over that 1,068 acres? Since it's, they have it a bit under control, since it is a conservation easement?
Not yet. The recording, the recordation of the easement is prior to the first building permit in Indian Trails Grove. So under the development order, under the comp plan amendment, all of that says that will ultimately happen.
That will happen when they start to...
When they start to build, but not until.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Good morning. Colleen Walter with Urban Design Studio. We are working with GL Homes on Indian Trail Grove. Could I just add a little bit more information in regards to the open space and agriculture and water resources areas?
Not at this time, madam. I'd like to allow my fellow colleagues to continue with their questions, but if they have a question for you, I think that'll be the appropriate time for whatever addition you were wanting to add to the conversation.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner. You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Mr. Davis, thank you very much, staff. My question, I was at December 15th at the BCC. I have many, many, many questions and many comments, and I think my comments are going to have to wait for another moment. My question specifically, apologies, my question specifically, how unusual, ah, see, I'm seeing a bit of a smile before the mask goes on. How unusual is this process of initiation on a concept while linked to a specific timeframe? I'm hearing August 1st to come back to us, so that there is time for, I'm assuming, transmittal next fall. How unusual is initiation on a concept? Thank you.
I'll go ahead and take that one. For processing, we have to accept applications. I mean, we've never denied accepting an application unless it doesn't meet the requirements of the comprehensive plan, but I'm not sure if that question, it wouldn't deny us having to process the application. So unusual, we seem to have more and more applications that are unique, so we don't take tally of how many times that something like this has occurred. I mean, obviously, this is one of those properties that has come to us in the past, in the last couple of, in 2018, for the same type of request, but...
Thank you. How unusual is this process of a developer going to the Board of County Commissioners prior to coming to Planning Commission?
It was a request by the Commission District in the...
And that was an outgrowth of the October 26th Ag Reserve Workshop?
Actually, in...
If I recall, and I'm asking this as a question of staff to correct my memory, if I'm incorrect, please, at the very end of the October 26th Ag Reserve Workshop, at the Board of County Commissioners, a commissioner at that time introduced a request.
Actually, on May 5th of last year...
Well, May 5th, okay.
Was when the commissioner had requested us to bring forward other agricultural areas within the county as a county-wide discussion. So we brought that forward on the workshop on October 26th to have the Ag Extension Office Director, Ron Rice, bring forward all of the agricultural countywide that has occurred, all the different agricultural areas. And after that, at the end of that day, they requested us to come back December 15th for this item.
Thank you. That really helps to clarify. Another question, please. Either at May 5th or October 26th, was there discussion of linking any of this to Palm Beach County's water management issues?
I think this area has always been part of the discussion, the 1,068 acres, even when the application was approved in 2016, it was contemplated for either water resources or agriculture. So it has been something that's been discussed in the past.
But the linkage to 680 acres in the ag reserve?
Oh.
Was that, I don't recall.
That really was the novelty item, I mean, novelty in the sense of new, not novelty as in it was, but the concept of that was really something that the GL changed from, if you, some of you may recall, there was a Planning Commission agenda back in December of 2017 that involved a concept like this, but they withdrew it. So there was never a public hearing or anything on that. That was a similar but completely different, wasn't focused on 680 acres in the ag reserve, but it was in the course of that discussion post the 26th workshop and the December 15th. That was when we learned the specific, you know, 680 acres, that was the changed version from the 2017 application that had been made. So that's when we began to understand that it was a much more confined, the prior version was much more open, it involved multiple development orders, and there wasn't really a water resources component to that. That was just a straight-up, we're going to use preserves in Indian Trails Grove for the ag reserve. There wasn't another benefit that was proposed.
Thank you. So in the form of another question, please. At December 15th, and I was there, and I believe there might have been three other Planning Commissioners that I noted were there on that date, there was no approval given by the Board of County Commissioners. Staff was directed to continue to look into this. Am I correct that there was no approval given? The mayor at that point had decided that he would not take a formal vote, and I heard you say that in the initial presentation, but I just want to confirm that for my fellow commissioners who were not there. There was no vote taken?
No, the board had a deliberate, or not a deliberate, had a discussion, and then, yes, you're correct, there was no formal motion to endorse or not endorse. They then closed the discussion, that was the end of the item. There was no formal action or direction from the board on that.
Okay, and thank you so much. And, Mr. Chair, will we be able to voice our comments prior to taking a vote?
I think that's the appropriate point, to do some of what has transpired in the past 10 minutes. But, yes, ma'am, I do have a question for the Director, Mrs. Ben. I thought I heard you say earlier that you kind of have a working list of things that if this text amendment is not approved, that you were planning to work on, I guess, in the next weeks, months, et cetera. How much of a, well, first of all, can you identify specifically what those items are, and how much of a delay you will have to take on if, in fact, this text amendment is approved by motion of this board?
Well, as Ramsey said, we can, obviously, I'm not, the reason why I was stating what I was stating was because Mr. Stopek had questioned how many hours this would take, and we have contemplated, you know, the number of staff that we have, some staff that are leaving, and the number of projects. We are gaining a lot of, or having intake of many applications of other land use amendments throughout the county as well. We've actually always have had a lot of issues trying to do some county-initiated items and proper planning, wanting to get away from that reactive planning and be more proactive planning. But as far as this application, so we did a workshop with the board, I believe, in October or September of last year, with this Planning Commission regarding some of the workforce housing, TDR changes, density, pretty lengthy presentation. Some of those items may need to be just put on the back burner. We're still moving forward with some TDR changes through the ULDC, but we need to take a look at the staffing and try to see, perhaps, if this item moves forward, then after October, if the plan is to do transmittal in August and October, do the adoption consideration, we can thereafter move forward. But anytime that we get additional items, of course, you know, we have to shift priorities around and make sure that we have the staff to do that.
I got to ask it again.
Sure.
I'm assuming if you actually have a priority list of, I know you have a number of things that come through, and your days are very fluid, applicants come through, I'm sure, on a daily basis, but again, I thought I heard you mention earlier that you actually had maybe one, two, maybe three things that were of high priority, that if this amendment is not approved, would afford you the requisite time to kind of, I guess, more quickly push those along. You all can say what you want to say about trying to attack things, but I run a business, you only have so many hours in a day, so realistically, I mean, there is a breaking point. And I'm just asking you, just for clarity of what I may want to do once this matter goes to a motion, what are those priorities, and how much would they be delayed in being completed if this text amendment is approved today?
Right, so I would say probably, probably about six to eight months delay on those other projects. And those are the compatibility items, the increased density within the urban suburban tier, and some of the other urban infill redevelopment projects that we were, text amendments that we were looking into. We also have some of the other ones, such as looking at the urban redevelopment area as well, things that concentrated on increasing density within the urban suburban tier, things like that. Some of the other priority items that would help processing amendments and TDRs and workforce housing, we're still moving forward on those, because we still find that those need to be done as soon as possible. So that, those... So, that, those items will still, still move forward.
If the motion, if the text amendment were denied today, do you have any idea as to what the ultimate delay, assuming that, assuming that the applicant comes back for, for approval at some point in the future, do you have any idea as to the, I guess, net delay in construction of this development? The applicant would, would suffer six months, a year, two years, three years? Do you have any way of opining on that?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not able to opine on that.
Can someone from the applicant step to the podium? I'm just, my question is, if, if this, if you have to go back, I guess, resubmit this text amendment for approval, what do you believe the actual delay in construction would be to you? Six months, a year, a year and a half, two years, 10 years?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board Members. Colleen Walter with Urban Design. Before you today, this item is for your recommendation to the Board of County Commission. So, this initiation request, after you all take your action on it, it will go to the Board of County Commission for them to make a final decision on it. If that decision is not favorable, then the applicant will go back and essentially have to reassess where they go from here, as will the county, as it relates to their water resources and other needs that they have.
Thank you. But there's the catch-22. I thought I heard you say, Director, that the Board, the Commission Board asked for you to send this back down and hope, if there was approval of the text amendment, then you would take a deeper dive into the application. Because I thought during the presentation earlier, you said, hey, this is kind of a cursory understanding or review. So, we don't really, we have not even taken time to ask certain questions that we would normally ask. That's what I thought I heard earlier. Am I, am I misstating?
This is, this is initiation. This is just the beginning. We don't have any data and analysis for you.
Right.
This would move on.
So, the, so the Commission wouldn't take action on it because they're in, they would be substantially in the same position that they were when they initially said, hey, send it back to the Planning Board for consideration? Because they didn't have any information to really make a, making an informed decision on whether to support this text amendment at that time, correct?
There was no motion to be done at that time because there was no application that was submitted for a text amendment. So, at least now, the Board would have that in, in place.
If we approve this, approved, moving forward with...
Well, today, the initiation is an advisory to the Board. So, this would definitely be going to February 2nd for the Board consideration.
But if we don't initiate today?
It still goes to the Board.
How does it lay out at the, whenever the August County Commission meeting or whenever it would be on the agenda? How would it play out then? Because it sounds like you would not have been authorized, if you will, to do any additional research, investigation. Your opinion would still be, we don't know anything.
If it's not initiated today by the Planning Commission, we still move forward to the Board on the February 2nd for their consideration, and they would consider the Planning Commission's advisory, you know, advice.
So, will there be any, that's what I'm trying to get clear in my mind, because it's not. Will there be any additional information that the Board would be afforded if, if the text amendment is, the initiation of the text amendment is approved by this Board today versus if it were not?
The Board will be seeing the exact same item that you're seeing. It's just as if it was a comp plan amendment that was ready for their approval. They review the same thing that you see. It's the same thing with initiation. They're going to get the same exact information and the same recommendation from staff.
Okay. So, then why did we go through all, all of that initially about not really diving deeply into it? And that's...
Just because that's the process for initiation. We do this for any text amendment that comes forward, whether it's a county-initiated amendment or a privately initiated amendment. We have to kind of grant, the, the Planning Commission and the Board grants the ability for us to move forward and for the applicant to submit their future land use application thereafter. So, it's kind of just a process for, for your consideration.
Just the process. Okay.
And just, just a couple of things, too. The onus is really on applicant here, too, to submit quality applications. I know we have this timeline up there, but if the applications aren't of good quality, it's going to take us way more time than we probably initiate, you know, initially thought of to go through everything. So, the onus is on them to also get, you know, a good application. Also, once this does go in front of the Board next month, if there is a staffing issue, we, we can speak to the Board, and they can direct us to whether hire more or get some consultants, et cetera, to try, deal with whatever workload there may or may not be. But it's also hard for us because we don't see the quality of the application that's been submitted yet. And obviously, we've told them time and time again that it needs to be of good quality if they want to follow this timeline.
Understood. At this time, I'd like to take a motion, receive a motion from the Board to...
Oh, one more.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Commissioner Carr.
It's okay. The beauty of being last is all my questions pretty much have been answered. But the one question I do have, if this is initiated today, you have a team ready to go, and you would be able to meet the timelines that are up there, or you're confident that you can make those timelines?
We've always made it work. It would be initiated for Board consideration February 2nd. So, after that, we would, you know, there have already been a lot of internal discussions already and meetings and all of that. So, it's just, you know, prioritizing the, the items that we work on.
And are there any, thank you. And are there any other projects that we might miss some deadlines because of this? Or...
Some of the county-initiated ones that we've discussed, we would just hold on the back burner as we've done in the past. It would not, you know...
Perfect. Thank you very much.
I'll take a motion to approve.
You should, if staff or the applicant want to respond to any of the public comments, I think it's appropriate, would now would be the appropriate time.
Okay.
You go ahead.
For the record, Cliff Hertz, Nelson Mullins, here on behalf of GL Homes. I've been representing GL for probably 20 years in this forum, and I was a little taken aback. It's unfortunate that Mr. Rattery couldn't be here by some of the implications that went to GL's credibility after they have been completely transparent with this Board, the County Commission, and the staff for over 20 years, at least during my tenure as their representative. And that was a little upsetting to me. More importantly, with regard to the water resources issue and the 1,600 acres, the ownership of that 1,600 acres is critical to potential water resource improvements. Jeremy McBrien, County's Water Management Director, Water Manager, rattled off a series of potential water resource, both quantity and quality, improvements that could be made as a result of the ownership of the 1,600 acres. And to somehow doubt that that is the case, I think, is unfortunate. And it's unfortunate Mr. McBrian couldn't be here to also rattle those off today. So, I just wanted to make those two points. I don't like GL's credibility being put at issue. They do have consultants, water consultants, who are highly regarded and respected in this community. And two, the potential water benefits from the ownership of the 1,600 acres is really not in doubt. So, let's not play games here. Thank you.
Do you have any follow-up? Do you have any comments that have been made?
None.
And I will move to follow the staff recommendation to initiate the proposed text and map series amendments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Can we do a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Oh.
I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Vinaquer?
There is for me on WebEx, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just to be clear, we don't, I feel like, as I've been listening to the conversation, just a reminder on process, we don't initiate or not initiate anything. We recommend to the Board that we think they should initiate or not initiate. So, the, the motion would be to recommend the Board initiation. It's just, as, as always on the Planning Commission, we don't make the decision. The Board sees exactly what we do, but then they have the benefit of also hearing our recommendation to move forward or deny. I just think that should be clear in the motion.
Counsel, should, should we, should we have a second motion to approve the language that was just proposed?
It can, it can be restated in the form of a recommendation.
Okay. So, do we have a, do you want to modify yours? Or is there someone?
Yeah, I'll modify to match what you want it to say. So, I'm just reading from what was given to us. So, let me see if I can change this. So, to follow the staff's recommendations, to recommend to the BCC that we initiate the proposed text and map series amendment. Does that work? Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Additional discussion? Yes, ma'am.
First of all, Mr. Hertz, this is not a game. I've been doing this now for 30 years. The concept of the Ag Reserve is something we came up with a very long time ago. I was on that bus when Hugo Unruh and the present sitting Commissioners ran through the Ag Reserve and said, yes, this is something that's important, that we need to preserve. And I work for free. So, I'm not playing games. As far as the water, yes, it's very, very important to me. But if this land was so important, somebody would be stepping forward to purchase it without the cost of crumbling the Ag Reserve. Even if we do this as far as site-specific, obviously, that's going to bite us in the butt because that's what just happened to us with the previous vote regarding the storage facility. Oh, it's only going to be this area, and oh, it's going to be site-specific and whatnot. This will be the end of the Ag Reserve if we lift preservation-conservation easements and put them in other areas of the county and not protect the Ag Reserve. Thank you.
Commissioner Vinaquer, yes.
Well, I just, I just have a, two comments. One thing is that, from the very beginning, this has been very clear. And we've been speaking with the, with the applicant and all, it's been very clear, they've been very clear about everything. And I, and I think that's wonderful about, so, I don't have any problem with the transparency here at all. Just one thing that if, I, I just, I don't feel that we're holding the, anybody up with, if we don't initiate, because they do have a plan there, and it's an approved project, If the Planning Director can just, they can go forth and do, and develop the entire 4,872 acres.
For the Indian Trails Grove, they have an approval from 2016 to move forward. Yes.
Any additional discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I implore my fellow Planning Commissioners to think about this very carefully before voting and listen and read between the lines. I also commend GL on its product and on its transparency. Certainly, never an intent to suggest otherwise. However, there are services and needs and county services needed in areas that have not been addressed. And we also do not have a demonstrated solution for the water problems. I, I was there on December 15th to hear the Water Management Director, and there was nothing definitive about his assessment, understanding that there would have to be some more investigation into this. I will be voting against this initiation.
Any additional discussion?
Yes, John Carr. I want to thank GL Homes and staff for great presentations, very helpful. Anytime I hear workforce housing and water, it's very important to our county to let our Commissioners take a look at it, to see and see how they can improve that in our county, especially, specifically with the water. It's not just Jupiter, but that water's flowing into the Lake Worth Lagoon. So, I'm in support of this. I hope my fellow Commissioners understand that it's, those are two big issues that this will help initiate for the County Commissioners to look at. Thank you.
For my members on WebEx, any discussion?
It's Rick. Yeah, just, just in summary, I hate to see us go into a situation where we're simply kicking the can down the road and at the expense of a lot of people's time, effort, resources, money, and other projects around the county, only to come back here and essentially have the same discussion again, only maybe a little more forthright, for lack of a better phrase. So, you know, at this point, I would, I would be of an opinion that do your soul-searching now and save the grief, for lack of a better phrase, of going through what could possibly be almost a year's worth of work to get us back to the same position that we're in right now. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, maybe I have a, a roll call?
John Carr?
Vote yes.
Barbara Roth?
No.
Lori Vinaquer?
No.
Penny Pompey?
Yes.
Dagmar Bros?
No.
Sarah Perdue?
You know who else has been very, very quiet lately? In fact...
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson?
No.
Angela Vaughn?
Yes.
Marsha Hayden?
No.
Rick Stopek?
No.
Eric Royal?
No.
Edwin Ferguson?
I vote no.
Kara Cap?
No.
Nine to four.
It's nine to four. Nine no, four yes.
So, the motion did not pass. The vote was, I heard, nine to four. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes. It is a four yes, nine no.
Mr. Chair, can I offer a new, a new item?
You'd like to make another motion?
Make a motion.
Please.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend denying this application.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, all right, is there any discussion on this motion before we go to vote?
Is it appropriate that we do that?
In past times, I have, have seen where we've, if you've denied the motion, you come back...
It, it would provide the Board with direction or recommend, a definitive recommendation from, from the Planning Commission.
All right. Aside from that question, is there any additional discussion? Madam Clerk, maybe, may you, we have a roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Can I just verify that Kara Cap made the motion and Barbara Roth seconded?
Yes.
Thank you. John Carr?
No.
Barbara Roth?
Yes.
Lori Vinaquer?
Yes.
Penny Pompey?
No.
Dagmar Bros?
Yes.
Sarah Perdue?
No.
Kylie Harper Larson?
Yes.
Angela Vaughn?
No.
Marsha Hayden?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
Eric Royal?
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson?
Yes.
Kara Cap?
Yes.
Nine yes, four no.
All right. So, the motion passes nine to four. Now, we turn to item 4A2, the county-proposed text amendment. Good afternoon, or good morning.
Good morning, I'm sorry. So, the purpose of initiation is to provide advanced consideration of proposed text amendments to the comprehensive plan prior to development of the detailed staff report and analysis. So, if initiated, these items will come back through the public hearing process this spring or summer. There are five county-proposed text amendments for initiation. The first two amendments are requested by county departments, who are also available to answer any questions. And this includes a request by the Department of Community Services for... And this includes a request by the Department of Community Services for revisions to the Health and Human Services element to reflect the current system of care in the county. The second is to establish an economic element within the comprehensive plan and is requested by the Department of Housing and Economic Development. In addition, the Planning Division is proposing revisions to the future land use element to create a third industrial future land use designation called commerce, and that would be specifically for light industrial uses. This will establish the framework for the new future land use within the comprehensive plan. And then an associated text amendment is proposed as a follow-up to the Agricultural Reserve Workshop that was held with the board this past fall. And that text amendment would provide additional policy guidance specifically for the commerce flu within the agricultural reserve tier. And the final item is also a follow-up from the workshop, and this will explore options to allow higher-density residential development in the ag reserve tier in order to facilitate additional workforce housing. In conclusion, staff recommends to initiate these proposed amendments.
We have three public comment cards. When I call your name, please come to the podium. Mr. Drew Martin, Mr. Jim Knight. After Mr. Martin, Ms. Berry, if you don't mind coming to the podium vacated by Mr. Martin, I'd appreciate that.
Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Lockshead Group of the Sierra Club. We're concerned about anything that increases density in the ag reserve, and our goal has always been to keep with the original plan. We think that the county had a good plan for the ag reserve, and it just, you know, this kind of, you know, nipping away at the plan, you know, concerns us. Obviously, there can be some changes. I am not convinced that the best place for workforce housing is in the ag reserve. I think there are other areas where it should and can be built. Of course, we know that there's a fund that was created by the state, I think it's called the Sadowski Fund, that was supposed to be used to purchase affordable housing, and the legislature refuses to fund that fund. And really, housing, workforce housing is really not meet the needs of people that truly need housing. It's still expensive. And what we really need is housing in the urban areas that are close to the public transportation. I don't believe that the ag reserve is the best place to do that. I don't think you want to draw more people into the ag reserve. And unfortunately, in order for developers to build workforce housing, they have to increase density. So, you know, the Sierra Club supports affordable housing, absolutely. We would like to see affordable housing in the county. We just do not support putting that. As far as the light industrial, we are concerned, again, with putting more activity into the ag reserve. So what we're asking is to stick with the original plan and to stop changing the zoning in the ag reserve itself and to try to preserve the existing agriculture and the existing open space. And I think that improves the quality of life for the people in the county and the people who live there. Thank you very much.
Jim Knight, still at 7:40 Havana Drive, Boca Raton. First of all, I seem to get this feel from the board and in general that the ag reserve's going to be destroyed if any changes happen out there. Last I checked, there's 12,000 acres that are preserved in perpetuity, and that's not changing. And I think some of the changes to be able to have housing, you've got a pretty big hospital, which is growing, and it's going to continue to grow, even though they say they're not. You pick up the papers, they're still doing deals and expanding and so forth, that's out there. And you have people that work there that can't afford the million-dollar homes in the ag reserve. And I think it's important to have a diversity of housing stock in the ag reserve, and I think that's important. One of the other issues that came about, we all heard for quite a while, is heritage farms. Heritage farms, there's a lot of landscape businesses that are in there. The proposed changes to some of the lands out there for light industrial uses are going to be homes to those. I've already sold a couple of properties to people that have moved out of the heritage farms area. You all remember seeing the video, you know, many, many vehicles coming and going, and it's a much better area to put those trips on what in, on a number of the areas is a six-lane highway. 441 is not a rural little road. It's a six-lane highway. And so I would support the initiation of these various items. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Berry, are you still present? Great.
I think the plan of the ag reserve was made 20 years ago, and voters voted on it, and it was a good plan. The comprehensive plan, it followed the comprehensive plan, and it included that open space for agricultural use. It only helps us if we have farms in our backyard, and as I said, there's new methods that we can employ, like biodynamic farming and permaculture. And I'd like to see some people who are experienced in this field come, be part of these meetings. I think the workforce amendment should be denied. We have, we can keep our density in the area of 43rd Street, the houses, the buildings that are not being used, that are not being occupied, the Greyhound racetrack, which is deserted, there's a lot of deserted buildings in that area that can be planned for workforce housing. Let's keep our open areas open. Let's have an ecologist and a biologist come and examine the areas, evaluate what's there. We have a problem with birds. The order bond, latest order bond bird count tells us that robins can go extinct, they're in danger, sparrows. There's, there is a dwindling number of common birds. That's quite scary. We have ecosystem collapse. Maybe you're tired of hearing this, maybe it's not pleasant news, but we can make it better. We can buy, if you use permaculture techniques, and young people are getting involved with this, there's a man who was here just two minutes ago, he has a permaculture farm. There's biodynamic methods being used in California, and these areas survive extreme drought and climate extremities, which we're going to be, extreme situations which we're going to be facing in the future and have been occurring throughout, have been occurring throughout the world globally. So I think you're looking forward, if you include people from the scientific field who are, who are thinking more positively about land use and unconventionally, it will help us. It will help us to be sustainable, and it will help us to have a place that is really different. I mean, unique, keep our uniqueness. So if you can include the hydrologists, the ecologists, conservationists, these are people who can examine the land we have and see.
Thank you.
See how we could move forward positively. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this item?
What happens if you're okay with four of them, but you're not okay with one of them? Like, I mean, I do understand, you know, Mr. Real Estate Broker back there selling homes to people in the ag reserve and, you know, what his intentions are, but I don't think we need workforce housing in the ag reserve. I do believe that we need to take care of uses that are out there to make them legal. I know code enforcement has been down the throats of the landscape services, and so we do need a new light industrial designation for uses like that. But I am not in support of adding density into the ag reserve through workforce housing. What do I do?
You can certainly make that as part of the recommendation to remove, I think it's the AGR multifamily from being initiated. Each one of these are individual projects, reports that will come forward. It's initiation, it's not a recommendation of approval or denial of a particular topic.
Five votes, we do each one, or we do them as a group of five?
I would recommend, and we can talk to the.
I think for convenience and efficiency, if everybody was in agreement about making a motion for all five, but if you want to break one out, you can vote on four of them separately and then the separate one if you'd like.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Roth.
Thank you, Chair. That was really my, part of my question was, did we have to consider this as a whole package? And I'm looking at a specific issue of traffic. Having been on this particular planning commission for four years now, we hear over and over again about certain uses that increase traffic. So when I saw these coming together as what I thought would have to be one vote, I was torn. I have also recognized the need for light industrial use, and with some of those uses appropriately placed, we see a reduction in traffic. However, when we counter that with what's proposed with an increased density, it just negates any benefit we would have there. So could we please vote on individual items? Thank you.
I was actually going to suggest that we do that, and hopefully it doesn't extend the meeting too much, but I think for just clarity purposes, I think it would make more sense for us to vote on each amendment individually. And I do respect your suggestion, though. Having said all that, do we have any additional discussion from our in-person members at this time? I'll turn to our WebEx attendees. Do you have any additional discussion, questions for staff at this point?
None for me at this time, thank you.
Yes. Commissioners Larson, Cap, Van, and who else is up there? Commissioner Royal, do you have any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right.
No, no comments.
None at this time.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to point out also that we have a number of department directors here, as well as staff from the Health and Human Services for Community Services, James Green, as well as the Deputy Director for Housing and Economic Development for the economic element. So we want to thank them for their participation. And it sounds like the only one that's really, the one that staff or Planning Commission is not in favor of, maybe the AGR multifamily. So you can take the other ones as a batch, it's up to you, Chair, or, and then just remove that one last one that's on that list, but it's up to you.
To that point, then, may I, how about this, whether it be Commissioner Braas, because I think you said, you stated you had a concern with only one amendment. Would you be willing to enter, to submit a motion to approve the four, save the one, and then see if anyone wants to amend that motion?
I think that would be very good for the interest of time, if everyone's okay. I would like to make a recommendation that we support the amendments, for staff to move forward on the first four points, on the economic development, Department of Community Services, light industrial uses, future land use designation, industrial commerce, but not include addition of workforce housing in the ag reserve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote?
John Carr?
Yes.
Barbara Roth?
Yes.
Lori Vinecar?
Yes.
Penny Pompey?
Yes.
Dagmar Braas?
Yes.
Sarah Perdue?
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson?
Oh, no. No. Oh, I won't.
We'll come back to her.
Angela Vaughn?
Yes.
Marsha Hayden?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
Eric Royal?
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson?
Yes.
Kara Cap?
Yes.
Going back, Sarah Perdue? Thank you. Kylie Harper Larson? Thank you. All are yes.
At this point in time, Commissioner Braas, I guess just to expedite things, would you consider making a motion to deny initiation on the fifth amendment? I believe it's the fifth.
Wasn't that part of my?
Uh.
No.
You still have to.
Oh, I just took it out.
Yeah, we took it out.
Okay. I would like to, how do I do this? I would like to not support staff moving forward with the initiation of the text amendment regarding workforce housing. Is that right?
Be more like to deny initiation, correct?
Recommendation to deny initiation.
Recommend, I do a recommendation to deny the initiation of the workforce housing element in the ag reserve.
You got it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Can we have a discussion on that?
I was, thank you. So since you asked, Commissioner Vineker, what is your question?
Yeah, just, I'm going to vote, I have to vote against this because I want to initiate it. I just ask staff with all of these discussions during the next few months to please carefully consider the location of this workforce housing, and please respect that line in the sand of 441. We, I would definitely support this and also the light industrial, industrial commerce, just with the, just to let staff know that, please be aware of appropriate places in the agricultural reserve.
And I just want to clarify, it's not just the, it's not just about workforce housing. The item is the AGR multifamily, just wanted to make sure.
Well, the increased density and workforce housing, yeah. Increased density, we understand the need for that.
Do we need to amend the motion then because, or is it okay as?
Well, we'll track it as a denial of the initiation of the AGR multifamily since it was listed like that in the report. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Sure, thank you. Commissioner, yes.
This is something that I think needs to be denied, and I'll tell you why, because otherwise you're saying that only people who can afford million-dollar homes are allowed to live in the ag reserve. And if you are a minimum-wage worker, you can't live here. You have to go to very urban density core where they may not want to raise their children. They may want to be out in the country. So I firmly support going forward with exploring workforce housing in the ag reserve.
But that wasn't the motion.
So I'm a no, I'm a no on the motion.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, just, thank you. I think it's important that we, you know, see here, it does say explore options, not saying that we're approving anything other than that. Thank you.
Commissioner Roth.
Thank you, Chair. I do not live in the ag reserve, I don't know how many times I've said that, but I want very much to protect the ag reserve for so many of the reasons that have been expressed today, both by the people who have come to speak with us and by my fellow commissioners. I must once again dispute that there are only million-dollar homes available for people within the ag reserve. And I must also stress once again that there is workforce housing just outside the boundaries of the ag reserve, right in my backyard specifically, and I am three-quarters of a mile north of the ag reserve beginning. So there are what I call the myths of the ag reserve and housing restrictions that I find myself, again. find myself, again, trying to clarify. I am very much in support of workforce housing and the needs for that, literally in my backyard at Hypoluxo and Lyons Road, where we worked for years to come up with more dense housing in the center of what is known as the villages of Windsor, radiating out into single family homes. I have been supportive of that for the 18-plus years. I've lived here, I've been supportive of that for the four years I've been a commissioner. But we just need to all understand that there is housing available in proximity to the hospital, to the commercial sites, for the people working in those areas. Thank you very much.
To our members attending on WebEx, do you have any, any discussion regarding this motion?
None here.
No.
All right, hearing none. So just so everyone's clear, if, if you vote yes, that means you're in favor of there not being any exploration in regard to this text amendment. And if you vote no, then that means you're in favor of there being exploration in regard to this text amendment. Just to make sure that everybody's clear. All right. Yes, in this regard, yes. This is, yes. Madam Clerk, I'll say less on that. Do we have a roll call vote?
Certainly. John Carr.
No.
Barbara Roth.
Yes.
Lori Vinicor.
No.
Penny Pompey.
No.
Dagmar Bros.
Yes.
Sarah Perdue.
No.
Was that a no?
We'll come back to her.
Okay. Kylie Harper Larson.
No.
Angela Vaughn.
No.
Marsha Hayden.
No.
Rick Stopek.
No.
Eric Royal.
No.
Edwin Ferguson.
No.
Kara Cap.
Yes.
Sarah Perdue.
No.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Okay, great, sorry, thanks all.
That is three yes. 10 no.
Once she's done, I will. So you said it was three and, three and yet in favor and how many in opposition or no's?
10.
10, all right. I'll entertain a motion to approve initiation of, of that same text amendment.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Whoa, do we have a second? Do we have any discussion at this time? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Certainly, can I just confirm that Ms. Vinicor made the motion and Mr. Carr?
No, that was actually Penny Pompey made the motion.
Thank you. And Mr. Carr seconded.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you. John Carr.
Yes.
Barbara Roth.
No.
Lori Vinicor.
Yes.
Penny Pompey.
Yes.
Dagmar Bros. Sarah Perdue.
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson.
Yes.
Angela Vaughn.
Yes.
Marsha Hayden.
Yes.
Rick Stopek.
Yes.
Eric Royal.
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson.
Yes.
Kara Cap.
No.
It's 10 yes and three no.
All right. Well, now I'll turn to updates and comments. I'll turn to our WebEx attendees. Do any of the commission members have comments?
Nothing for me, thank you so much.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, that sounded like a no. All right, so I'll turn to our in-person commission members, Ms. Bros.
Okay, I'll make it real quick. You know, I really feel bad when people send in a letter giving their opinion on a proposal that we are voting on. And Thousand Friends of Florida, along with the Sierra Club, Locksahatchee Group, had Heidi Mahafi write a 10-page letter. It's very informative and, and to the point and whatnot. And, you know, I know a 10-page letter cannot be read to, you know, in a meeting or whatnot, but it's really a shame. I mean, I guess it's part of the record, but it really kind of just disappears, you know, even though they go through all this work, right? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Pompey. Okay. Commissioner Carr.
No comment, thank you.
Commissioner Roth.
Uh-huh. Well, Happy New Year, everyone in good health, and gee, I can't preempt our director, so I'll wait. Thank you.
All right, I think, think things went well today. Again, I would like us to continue limiting our, our, during the question and answer session, let's limit our discussions to questions. When there's a motion on the floor, that's when we can have, make those very same points that oftentimes we make during the, the presentation section of the, of the, of the, of the meetings. In regard to Commissioner Bros' point, I'm very understanding of your position. But again, time is, time is, time is limited. So we did make a point to make it known what their position was in regard to their opposition. But I don't think it's necessarily prudent for us to try to read into the record every single thing that they, that these persons want to say if it's that important to them. Similar to your point about if this land was so important, why hasn't someone eminent domained it? Well, to that point, if it's so important to them, take three minutes out of your life and come in here and concisely say, you know, state what your position is. But to try to circumvent that by hoping that someone will read a 10-page letter into the record, at least for now, that's not going to happen. But in any event, Happy New Year to them. Thank you all who attended today, and we hope to make this more streamlined as we move forward. At this time, I'll, I'll turn.
Hang on, before you close, I just want to couple it.
I was going to say, and I would appreciate if everybody give me, gives me a second to finish my thought, because a lot of times you'll find that we're on the same page. I just try to speak slowly so to make sure everybody catches up with my somewhat deep voice. Understanding, public speaking, sometimes my register is a little difficult, so I need to slow down. Having said that, my good Planning and Zoning Board Executive Director, do you have any comments?
Yes, I'll preface this with, please don't kill the messenger, but this is Patricia Bain's last planning meeting after 17 years, she is resigning to go on to bigger and better things. So kind of sad, but Kevin will be taking over her big shoes, forgive the pun. But, you know, Patricia's done a lot and we're going to definitely miss her and wish her all the best, but just wanted to let everyone know. And now she can give a speech.
Our Chief Land Use Attorney, do you have any comments, sir?
I'd just like to echo what Ramsey said, and we'll have, we'll have time to personally, outside of the meeting, wish Patricia a fond farewell, but she's been, she's been a, a big part of, of this department since I've been here and before that, and we really appreciate everything that she does. She definitely makes things go much more smoothly and, and very calmly, very calm demeanor. On that note, you know, some people leave, some people come. We have a new attorney, Darren Lysler. He's, he's, you're going to be seeing him at Planning Commission meetings and at board meetings relating to Comp Plan Amendment matters. He's coming to us from South Florida Water Management District. He was an attorney over there, and I believe he's also a hurricane. Is that correct?
Yeah, I went to law school at UM.
Very good, very good. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I want to thank the Planning Commission. I think I've worked with many of you for many years and thank you for all your diligence and reading through the many, many staff reports and many hours that we've spent on all of these things. I hope that growth management continues to move forward in the, in Palm Beach County and that many of the applica, policies, goals, objectives and policies in the comprehensive plan can be continued with the Managed Growth Tier system, which is very important. And I leave with, leave you all in good hands with Kevin Fisher. I think he's phenomenal and I thought I was detail oriented, he's a little bit more so than me, and I didn't think that could happen. So thank you very much for all your time and, and dedication to this advisory board.
Not knowing that you were leaving us, I just want to take a little license here and just say on behalf of all the board members that you've been a great resource to us, particularly some of us who are newer, like myself, being less than three years. You've made, you've helped make some things that might otherwise be complicated very simple to understand. So we really appreciate all that you've done for us and the citizens of Palm Beach County. And to the point that was made earlier, wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Having said that, motion to adjourn. Second. See you next month, everyone. Have a great day. Stay safe.
Yeah, bye-bye.